Welcome back, everyone. Item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. So I need a motion to approve the agenda. Alan, second please.
Second.
Jane? Does anyone have any items to be added or any items to be questioned on the, on tonight's agenda? Okay, all those in favor of approving the agenda for tonight's meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, do we have, uh, you got it, Chris, up there?
We do. Unmute. Michael, if I use the right screen.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can now, Mike.
All right, so I hope we've all convened as the audit committee. And it's my job to exempt the financial statements to the audit committee. Then for the audit committee to make a recommendation to the Board of Cooperative Educational Services for acceptance of the report. And the report is due October 15th to OSC and SED. And then after that, we will certify and send it to the federal government. The report is in the same format as it was in the past couple of years. On page one and two are our overall independent auditors' report. And at the bottom of page one, we say, "In our opinion, financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects." That is an unmodified opinion. That is the highest opinion we have as a profession. Some people call that a clean opinion, but that is slang. After that, we have pages three through 11. Three through 11 are management discussion and analysis. And they are required under GASB 34. GASB 34 is almost 20 years old, so this has been in the financial statements for a while. But one of the issues with the management discussion and analysis and page 12 and 13 of the report is that it doesn't provide a clear picture of what the BOSEs actually does on a day-to-day operational basis. Because this management discussion analysis, like page 12 and 13, is on a full accrual basis of accounting. We, as BOSEs in New York State, are not allowed to operate on a full accrual basis of accounting. We operate on the modified accrual basis of accounting, which we will see in a little while. And when I was talking to management today, they specifically asked me a question and to go over page seven. I think seven would work for this exercise if you want to turn there. So I will show you on page 12 what happens with full accrual. But when you're looking at your expenses and basically all of the changes for the accrual method of accounting happen in the expenditures. The expenditures are in the same titles that we have them in modified accrual. And the first one's administration. And you see that administration supposedly is up 15.3% for the year 2020 over 2019. The actual modified accrual, the way we keep our books, administration will, is only up $175,000 for the year. And I know administration is a big deal at BOSEs because the districts have to approve our admin budget. So what is going on here is we have had quite a large increase this year in our GASB 75 study, which is our post-employment health insurance benefits. That number is now almost $88 million that we will owe into the future for health insurance based on the contracts that we have in place right now and the current medical health trend rates and the mortality tables that the IRS has. So what's going on is we have our expenditures on the modified accrual basis, which were about 5.7 million. And to that, we've had to add expenditures for the post-employment benefits. And we've also had to add expenditures for the ERS pension, which went up quite a bit this year because the funding level went down due to the pandemic. And I will show you that on another page. But is there any questions about this page and full accrual based on what I said or other questions?
So I have one question. So if we use the example you're, you're explaining, the administrative costs.
Yes.
Now, is the accrual, which here is showing a percent change of 15.3%, is that real dollars or is that a accounting function?
It's an accounting function based on the increase in liabilities or assets on a full accrual basis of accounting. So GASB 34, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, came out with, you know, this presentation. But then they also have other GASBs, one of them being GASB 68 that says we have to study our pensions. Okay, so we have TRS, ERS. Those go up and down. And we either run an increase in expenditures or a decrease in expenditures through the modified accrual numbers. Same with the OPEB for post-employment benefits for health. We run increase in expenditures through these numbers. So there's no real dollars associated with them. We are not even allowed to fund that GASB 75 by New York State. So that is why they're not real dollars, but they are an accrual, accrual that is required by GASB. And one of the important distinctions to understand is that GASB is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. They are an independent group who tries to better the financial statements. And they're not written for New York State. GASB writes for the entire country. So New York State has very different rules and maybe Texas has. But everybody has adopted the GASBs to have a more uniform presentation. But again, we're not allowed to operate on this basis. So that's very important. If you go to page 12, I will show you what's going on here. So page 12 shows you the statement of net position of HF and BOSEs at 63020. This is a balance sheet. And this is with every accrual that is known at 63020. If you look a third of the way down the page where it says non-current assets, it says net pension asset proportionate share. That is GASB 68, that is TRS. So when they did the actuary study of TRS this year, they determined that HF and BOSEs and the rest of the school districts and BOSEs have overpaid into TRS. So the TRS sits at 102.2% funded. When you look, what does that do? It gives us an asset that we are placing on our books. And the asset is 1,620,662. Now, that sounds really great that we have this asset, but there's nothing we can do with it. New York State does not allow us to call up TRS and ask them to drop the rate on certificated employees. The rate's 8.86% this year. So we have to pay that for every dollar we pay a certificated employee. We pay 8.86% into, or 8.86 cents into the TRS system. And additionally, we can't ask them to take that for payment. We are still required to pay the TRS bill at the end of each, well, at the beginning of the next school year over three months. But that's one thing. If you look down in the middle of the page where it says long-term liabilities, and then you see other post-employment benefits and you look over, there's that GASB 75 number of 88,382,730. That number has been increasing quite a bit over the last few years because unlike the TRE system, which is fully invested into the stock market, BOSEs is only allowed to have interest in DIC-backed items or treasury-backed items. And thus, the interest rate has dropped so much, there's no interest being made on money. So the rate has increased the liability. Again, that is a future liability that the BOSEs will have to incur if everything stayed exactly like it is right now. And you know, we have elections, things can change. They could go to single payer healthcare, that would change a lot of things. They could drop the prescription drug cost, that would change a lot of things. The next time we do contracts with our bargaining units, we could ask them for additional co-pays or a bigger percentage of payment towards health insurance. That would change this number. So although the number is hard, it can change quite a bit by different factors throughout the years. Right above that, if you look, you have a liability of 5,56776. That is the other side of TRS, that is ERS. When they did the study this year, it was determined that we had only 86% funded. And thus, we had a liability of 5.5 million. That ERS liability has been funded to about 96% since they started looking at it. But this year, it's measured on 3/31, New York State's year-end. And the stock market had crashed at that time and their assets had dwindled. So I bet you if they looked at that number right now, there would only be a $1 million liability there for us as we have had in the past. But again, New York State is not asking you to pay that liability. It sits there on your books and will change next year when they redo the study. So on a full accrual basis of accounting, all in, you see that we have a deficit of $53 million. We do five BOSEs. All the BOSEs are in the same boat with their net position as a deficit. One of the things that also contributes to this deficit is we are not allowed to keep our money at a year-end as school districts do. We are this year giving about $5.2 million back in surplus. So there's another asset that a school district would have that the BOSEs refunds to the districts. So that is another reason why we have a net deficit position. And the other four BOSEs, we do also have a net deficit position. Are there any questions about the full accrual basis of accounting? Okay, the more important page is page 14. This is the most important page in the financial statements as far as I'm concerned. It shows you our actual position on June 30, 2020. And what this is, is the modified accrual basis of accounting. And it is the basis of accounting which we are required to operate on. A few years back, you might have heard that another BOSEs tried to claim that they were doing full accrual accounting. And New York State basically shot that down and told them they had to pay back the $45 million that they held on their books for health insurance. I actually agree with that BOSEs. We don't actually audit that BOSEs, but actually I agree with them that one of the issues is, is that the BOSEs can't hold the money. So when we have a co-sir and we teach something, we might not teach that down the road. And that teacher retires from here, we should have that money on our books in order to fund that future liability that we are in. It's my own personal opinion. What we are required to do, modified accrual basis of accounting, and we have that right here. You see the first column is the general fund. It accounts for almost all of the activity that happens in the BOSEs. And down at the bottom, the difference between assets and liabilities is fund balance. There's five categories of fund balance. But the OSC has said we can only use four of them, we can't use committed. So we have four of them, we have non-spendable. That just means that it's in a form other than cash at year-end. And at the BOSEs, we have to pay several bills that are due July 1st. We pay them in June. That's why we have an $828,000 prepaid expenditure. Then we have an unemployment, the second column, second category restricted. We have an unemployment insurance reserve. That's very important because what happens is if we lay somebody off, New York State does pay them the unemployment, but we have to reimburse New York State quarterly. The retirement contribution reserve, TRS, that was new last year. We currently have about $10 million in TRS salaries. So that, I mean, if we stuck at 10 million, we could change over the next five years. But you're allowed to put in 2% of your TRS salaries per year, up to 10%. So that reserve will probably grow to a little over $1 million over the next few years. And that's a very important reserve because the TRS rate has been as high as 25%, as low as 0.62% when, maybe 62, 63%, someplace in there when Pataki was the governor. So that rate can fluctuate quite a bit. And if we needed to tap that reserve so we could shave off the increase, that would really help us. The ERS reserve is next. You see that has quite a bit more money than the TRS. There is no limit from New York State as to what you can put into that reserve. And that reserve is for the other side. So if the ERS rates started to spike, we could use the Retirement Contribution Reserve, ERS, to pay for some of those costs. Then we have the Employee Benefit Liability Reserve. That's got 1.2 million in it. That is only good for sick or vacation time when somebody leaves the BOSEs. We can pay whatever we've given them in contracts. There's money that gets paid to a retiree based on how many days they have left, times a 50 or 55. So that's what that reserve is for. It is not allowed to be used as a termination benefit. So you can't say to somebody, "If you reserve, if you retire before June 30, we'll give you 25,000." That reserve is not allowed to use that. Then we have a property loss liability reserve. It's only got 50,000 in it. If something happens to windows or something, broken window, we could use that reserve. Then we have assigned fund balance, that will be the third category here. This is two different things in a school district. In a school district, this is where you balance your budget and have purchase orders. In a BOSEs, we don't balance a budget, so we only have purchase orders. Purchase orders are POs that have been issued to a vendor and they have not been fulfilled at June 30. So this 265,000 will automatically increase the 2021 budget so we can pay for those items that will come in in 2021 that were ordered in 2020. And then the last number is unassigned and it has a big negative in it, 828,000. The reason the negative is there is it's simply the offset of the non-spendable because we, as the BOSEs, are not allowed to have the 4% unassigned that the school districts have. So that's why we have a matching negative number there. The second column is the special aid fund. And you see at the bottom, there says total fund balance zero. The reason it's zero is because the only way we can get money from the special aid fund is to spend money first. So adult education, these type of things, we get these grants, we spend the money, we request a drawdown, revenue equals the expenditure, and thus creates no fund balance. Third column is school lunch fund. It accounts for only the lunch operation at the BOSEs. And you can see that we have $13,000 of inventory. Again, that's a non-cash item, is inventory left on hand at year-end. We have $91,000 worth of assigned. Assigned only means it's assigned to that fund. And then we have the Capital Projects Reserve. That's a little misleading because we don't have a capital project at this BOSEs. But when they did GASB 54, which is the fund balance distinctions, they said the BOSEs has to account for the CTE reserve in the Capital Projects Fund. So that's what we're doing, that 995,000. Very important if you want to buy a bulldozer or some other type of big, heavy equipment. Costs a lot of money. So that's a really great reserve to have. But overall, on a modified accrual basis of accounting, if you look at the total fund balance all the way to the right, Big difference from a deficit net position of $53 million. So it's the difference in the accounting, but this is the accounting method that we are required to use per New York State. Okay. After that, we have pages 18 through 45. Pages 18 through 45 are the notes to the financial statements. They are unchanged for June 30, 2020. There were no new GASB pronouncements that affected BOSEs for 2020. There was going to be one, it was going to be GASB 84. But they suspended that when the COVID came along and they've put that into 2021. And basically, GASB 84 just looks at your trust and agency fund and decides if it really belongs there or it would belong into the general fund as liabilities at year-end. We will be working with Kathy in her office later on in the year to determine what needs to be moved over at year-end. So these are unchanged, these notes, they do have a lot of information in them. They do talk about that $88 million number in a lot of detail. And it takes up a lot of pages in the what notes. After that, we have several schedules. The schedules just add value. They're either required by GASB, that would be a required supplemental schedule. Or they are supplementary information, and that means they're required by somebody other than GASB. In this case, it would be New York State. So those are also in your financial statements. And then we get to page 53. 53 is the second opinion from Weston Company, and that's what we do as a profession. We attach opinions to management's financial statements. So this is a yellow book audit, a governmental audit. And when you do a governmental audit, you have to just have an opinion over internal controls, over financial reporting. And here again, we have an unmodified opinion, a clean opinion. There's no issues with the financial reporting. Management does an incredible job. We do not have a journal entry to be made. Management goes through this financial statement with a fine-tooth comb. Maybe changed something for like $300. Changed like 52 pages, but it was a mistake and they found it. But again, that's the controls are working. We're not writing journal entries. We are able to produce a financial statement well before the October 15 deadline. We're able to meet and there's no issues. That's a clean opinion. After that, on page 55, we have to give another opinion. And this opinion is because the BOSEs receives more than $750,000 of federal aid. We have to do what's called a single audit. And here again, we have a clean opinion. There was no issues. We're required to test 20% of the federal aid. But we tested about 80% because you don't have a lot of grants and adult education is considered a cluster. So we had to test the entire adult ed cluster. And we'll have to do that again next year unless some other grant comes along because we have to get to that 20% and there'll be no other way to get there without doing adult education. After that, we have some notes to the single audit. And then we get to page 61. 61 is the independent auditors' report over the extra classroom activity funds. And here, we do on page two have a qualified opinion. So that's different from unmodified. The only reason it's a qualified opinion is because it's cash basis. There's no way to be at every fundraiser or sale when the collection happens. We only audit from when the money goes in the bank and when the check is written. So other than the collection issue where we can't be at a car wash or we can't be at a dance or other fundraisers, there is no issues with your extra classroom activity fund. These clubs are listed on page 64. And there's all about $33,000, $34,000 that runs through these clubs. They are all cash, highly susceptible to fraud. You don't want this because when you're looking at a $50 million, $60 million BOSEs and you have $34,000 in cash, this is where you can get your name in the paper. But again, everything looked good in the extra classroom activity funds. We did have a management letter comment last year. We had no new management letter comments. And the only comment was, is that security occupations didn't have any receipts or dispersments. So I know the board closed a few clubs, looking at new clubs. Maybe we could close out that $7 and be done with that. Or it operates and it has receipts and dispersments, one or the other. So I mean, overall, audit went well, as it has in the past. Very lucky to have such a talented business office. We have another BOSEs that we haven't even started the audit yet. So just to tell you the difference. But is there any questions about anything the audit committee would like to talk about? Okay, so the next step, if there's no questions, is the audit committee makes a recommendation to the Board of Cooperative Educational Services for acceptance of the report. We take it out of draft. We provide bound copies to the BOSEs and electronic copies of which the BOSEs would then submit to the state of New York, OSC and SED.
So can we have a motion to recommend this to the board as a whole?
All right, my move, so.
Second. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 That motion carries. Mike, do we, do we act, do we act on this in a separate motion in the board, with the board?
There's a board acceptance of the audit.
Okay, good.
It's an acceptance, not anything else, you just accept it.
Okay.
All right.
I think that's enough.
Yeah, I did read my agenda, but I forgot. Okay, so thanks, Mike.
Okay, thank you. Bye-bye.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep, bye, have a nice night.
Two.
So before we go, we should commend Kathy and her team for the work that they've done. I can remember times before, maybe not always in this BOSEs, where the audit posed significant issues for follow-up. And it looks like Kathy, all you have to do is to decide what to do with that $7 at the 1/12. So that's pretty nice.
Pretty outstanding job.
Yeah, thanks for all your hard work.
I just want to, Jen, clear results, I want to make a call right now. So big thanks to her and the rest of the business office because they're really team together. She's the one that coordinates the audit and does the day-to-day details with them when they're here. So big thank you to her for all of her work, too.
Right.
Yeah, the degree of preparation is impressive. I think, if you didn't catch it, what Michael was referring to is ours is done. And some others don't even have their, they aren't organized enough to get started. So, so good job, Kath and Jennifer and your whole team.
Okay, then moving on. Our next item is the, the approval of the board meeting, of the board minutes. And it's been recommended that the board approve the board minutes for the August 17, 2020 special meeting and the August 26, 2020 regular board meeting. Have a motion, please. Jane, and second?
Second.
Do we have any questions or corrections on the minutes? There being none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Now we have the report of the assistant superintendent.
Hold on, I gotta look over my shoulder now because that's blocked.
Maybe if you wear those, you'll have better luck.
Yeah.
Maybe I can see across the screen.
All right, there you go, Jay, there's your slide.
No, I'm not muted. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So good evening, everybody. One thing I want to say in education, what I've learned is things don't happen by chance. And I think one of the things that we learned just now with Mike, in Mike's report, is the amount of work that Kathy and her team have done and the amount, the amount of time and the diligence they have to our finances. It's amazing the work that they do, so I just want to thank Kathy. So I want to report on our student programs, and the best thing that I can say is from one of our administrators, a comment that he made was, we are focusing on school-related items like we normally do. So in this time, that's not so normal, it's great to hear that. We really have pivoted from having to deal with the pandemic. We're still dealing with the precautions and such, but we are doing a good job, our teachers are doing a great job, administrators having established a sense of normalcy for the students and getting back into a routine and a rhythm for the, for the classes and the students. They've done a great job with the social distancing in the classrooms. The, the teachers have been very adaptable with different modalities between remote, hybrid, and even the, of course, in-person. Also like to make a comment about our custodial and operations staff, the amount of work that they have done to maintain the cleanliness and the disinfecting of the building before, during, and after school. So they've done an amazing job as well. I think everybody should have a copy of the letter that I sent out on Friday to our staff. They really have done an amazing job during this first month of school. I'd like to just highlight a few things in each of the programs. So with ADK, we have a new leadership team. Today was Rick Potter's last official day with us, and now we have Chris Carrioto as principal and Brian Garrity as coordinator. We also have a new behavior specialist, Mike Shell. And his position in particular is going to entail providing each student with an individualized behavior, behavioral plan and academic plan. So more, even, even more individualized instruction. We also have instituted, started the PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention services with our students, focusing on positive reinforcement rather than just punitive situations. We also, with your approval tonight, will be working with a professional development specialist to provide support for our ADK staff throughout this year. In CTE, we also have some new leadership there as well, with Mike DeMeza taking over as principal and Riley O'Malley as coordinator. They have done an exceptional job contacting our school districts, both the administration as well as transportation, to ensure our, our students are on campus as and because you know that the high schools have varying degrees of schedules and different types of schedules at the component schools. We are starting a new program called NEPRIS. It's a work-based learning virtual tool that we're going to be using in CTE, ADK, and PTEC for our students. That will allow them career exploration, virtual work-based learning where industry professionals will be videoing into classrooms. There are over 10,000 library, a library of 10,000 videos, resources of different careers focused on the 16 career clusters, providing our students that opportunity since we may not be able to go out to locations. PTEC, the transition to GLEEB has gone very well. Also, when you think about the merging of three separate entities onto one site, well, actually, our site as well, the main campus, exceptional job by Matt Davis and our new coordinator, Celeste Keen. They have already made a great team. What they do is they alternate between our two sites, between the main campus as well as GLEEB. And once a week, they also make a trip to SUNY Cobleskill to check in on the college campus. Special education, they, they too have done a great job at the six sites, six locations that we have. And in particular, I'd just like to commend Tammy Dingman and her team at MECO dealing with the situation that they had two weeks ago. Within, within a day, they were up and running with remote learning, being able to get their students the technology they needed after we had to close the building. They've done a really good job with that and really did not miss, miss a beat. They returned to school on Monday of this past, of this week, and I checked in with Tammy today and they're doing very well. So just, just a tremendous job by our, our staff, teachers, administrators, entire support staff. I'm set, Dave. If anybody has any questions? I don't know if they know they're muted. I'm not ignoring your question, but you are muted if you're asking a question. They may ask me to repeat the whole thing, possibly.
They're wondering if we're teaching lip reading.
Yes. Dave, did you just ignore me this whole time?
Jean had a question, around attendance and what your impressions were with attendance and, and even percentages if we were at that point, but if you want to go ahead and repeat your, your question, Jean?
Yes, I just wondered what the rate of absenteeism is. It's the first month or two of school. I don't want it to be news that we don't want to hear, but I still would like to know where we're at with it.
Sure, what, what I'd like to do, if it's okay, I'd rather provide you facts and actual figures than, because I do have, I do have some, some ranges, but I'd rather give you the real numbers and I could do that. David, if that's okay, I'll share that with you at the end of this week for the board.
That would be fine.
Yeah, we should probably think about how we want to break that down because you're probably going to want, or you know, by, by division, there are some different models, attendants. For instance, at Rundack Academy, it's on a rotating week, CTE is every day. You know, special ed division has the ability for students to attend every day with some due to their, their IEPs or parent choice chose remote, so there's, there's, there's a lot to put, put into that and be able to quantify it. So, so we'll, we'll put our heads together and get something to you, I would think, you know, maybe in next week's Friday report, Jay?
That'd be great, absolutely.
And my other question has to do with the parental feedback you might be getting, even the student feedback that you might be getting. I know it's an informal kind of question, but have you got a sense of how that information is coming back to you, positive or negative or helpful or not?
So I do have a pretty good handle on attendance, that's why I just didn't want to give you a percentage. The attendance has been exceptional, and I think that's, that's twofold. One, the kids were so happy and frankly, so desperate to get back together. And one thing that I neglected to mention is their behavior following protocols has been outstanding. We have not, not a single issue has come to my attention about students being insubordinate relative to following safety protocols. And likewise, so I think by their participation and appropriateness, I, I think they're very happy to be back and to be having some sense of normalcy.
That's a sense I, I get both from some brief interactions here with students, but I think you all know I still have a, a school-aged son myself. And they, they want to be, at least his peer group really wants to be in school.
And Jean, another point to that is, as we know, many of the high schools, as I referenced previously, high schools have rotating schedules, whether it's AB days, alternating days, alternating weeks, depending on the school. Many of our students, especially in CTE, are finding ways to get themselves to school on a daily basis, whether it's parents bringing them, being able to drive themselves, whatever it might be, so they're making every effort to be here on a daily, daily basis, even if their high school is not in session on a particular.
That's what I wondered if you picked up, had already picked up any chronic examples of absenteeism, because once that becomes a pattern, it begins to be more difficult to solve it, we all know that.
Yeah. Correct.
Great, thanks, Jay. Do you have any, any other comments or questions for Jay? Okay, then, next up is Lori with the Deputy Superintendent's Report.
Hi, everybody. I want to echo Jay's comments about the business office. Kathy and her entire staff work so hard, not just on the audit, but ensuring that they provide whatever support they can to make sure that all of our programs can function in the best way possible. So we always thank the support that we receive from the business office. I wanted to talk to you tonight about three other, three, three exciting things, I think. So the first, New York State Education Department was recently awarded a three-year $20 million federal grant to implement a Teaching in Remote Hybrid Learning Environment Initiative. So the first year will be a collaboration among 10 regional information centers and 30 BOCs. The first year, the amount of money that's available is $3.5 million. And the BOCs are participating and the regional information centers participating felt that as a collaborative effort, we could maximize the amount of those funds in the best way possible. We are participating as a partner with Washington Saratoga BOCs and Questar BOCs on two of the six areas that the grant supports. The six areas are shifting to online learning, social emotional learning, families as partners, students with disabilities, ELLs and MLLs, and culturally responsive education. So we have developed, we feel, very strong resources and professional development opportunities here in our own region around online learning and supporting teachers with their online learning as well as that social emotional learning component that is so especially important this year, since we have had children home for such a very long period of time and struggling with many, many different issues. We had to submit an application, applications were due to the State Education Department on Monday. And depending upon if you were a lead BOCs or a partner BOCs, and we elected to be a partner BOCs, those applications were submitted on Monday, and Washington Saratoga BOCs submitted one for us as a partner to their work along with Questar BOCs. Those applications will be evaluated and then each of the lead BOCs will be identified as to which work they will be able to focus on as we move through this school year. The ultimate goal will be to have statewide a website with resources that are available to every school district, every teacher, to be able to support the online learning that is going on in almost every district around the state, and that is so important for us to be doing in a very effective and efficient way so that the learning of students continues to be high, highly effective and meaningful for students and that they're meeting all of the New York State standards that are required for them to be successful in school. Capital Region BOCs will be setting up the website where all of these resources will be housed and their communications folks who are so extraordinarily gifted will be making sure that everything on the website is accessible. So that's the TRLE, we, we call that much shorter than Teaching in Remote and Hybrid Learning Environments, the grant. And as we progress over, over the next couple of years with that grant, we'll find out more and in what additional ways we will be able to support this hybrid and remote learning environments throughout the entire state, and we're excited about being a partner in that. Moving on to summer school, this past July and August was our first ever attempt at a 100% virtual summer school for, as opposed to our regional summer school that we typically run every year, normally in either the Glittersville School District or the Amsterdam School District because they are so much bigger than our other component districts and they have space for all of the students who we typically enroll. So Christine Petro has been our regional summer school principal since we started back in 2009, if I'm not mistaken, with a regional summer school opportunity. And she made a comparison for me that compared last year's statistics with a full face-to-face program to this year's program, which was fully remote. And it was interesting, a couple of statistics I'd like to share with you. One is that while the enrollment was lower this year for the face-to-face, and we really attribute it to more pass/fail that many districts adopted as their final grades for students and no Regents exams were required this year for students in June, that not as many students needed to take summer school courses. We found out that compared to this year and last year, we had about the same number of students withdrawing, 34% and 32%. So we, we unfortunately had students leave the program, but not to any greater degree than we have had in the past with the face-to-face program. We also had 89% of our students pass their coursework this year as opposed to 82% in the past, which was, I think, also attributed to we utilized a pass/fail this year, which our teachers in our summer school program liked better than the numerical system that we have used in the past. And then finally, not that this would be a surprise to you, but we had no students who were removed from the program this year for discipline issues. And that was a benefit that we saw that, that because of limited interaction, it was on Google Meet, an electronic, a digital format for our students, and it was on alternating days. So half of our students in a particular class would be meeting with their teacher in a Google Meet on one day. And then the next day, they would be doing work through an online program that we purchased for all of our students, and they would be doing their work independently. Our teachers had office hours so that the students could reach out on those remote days if they were running into difficulties. I think our next step will be to talk to the superintendents about some of the information we've gathered from this remote summer school opportunity to see if summer school moving forward next year and years beyond will be the same as it used to be, will be changed to a remote, will be hybrid? What possibilities exist for us to maybe change how we offer a regional summer school program to all of our districts? We did have nine districts participating this year, which is typical in this region. The final piece, and I'm also really very excited about this piece, is that our instructional services department has developed an opportunity that we will be sharing with our superintendents. They will be developing, instructional services will be developing surveys, social emotional learning surveys that districts will be able have their staff and students complete. Our coaches will take that data, they will analyze the data, and they will provide to each of the districts the results, trends that they're seeing, and recommendations and resources in order to make sure they're supporting both their teachers and their students in this very critical area with the social emotional needs. I'm hoping that we'll be able to have a succinct descriptor that we will take to the superintendents in October. Before I open these three items up for questions, I did want to just mention that because we changed our school structure a little bit this year and brought our teachers in before Labor Day so that they had sufficient time to prepare for this school year, we will be bringing to the board in October and amended, a modified 2021 school calendar. And I'm sure you're aware that we did early superintendent's conference days this year to help our teachers be as prepared as they could possibly be for the hybrid and virtual programming that they needed to provide to our students this year. So I will pause and certainly answer any questions on any of these pieces that I've shared with you this evening.
We're on this time. Do you have any questions for Lori or comments?
Jean. Lori, you're talking about the two different ways of providing instruction. Something Jay said kind of carried over to your information. He said the kids were so excited to be back to school. And that made me think, how many children right now who've been experiencing distance learning from home have made an attempt to be included again in the onsite, person-to-person learning? And is that a problem with the social distancing and all the other things that have to be taken into account in order to do that?
Well, I, I think that Jay can speak to that. We've been able to, I'll speak quickly and then I'll turn it back over to Jay. We've been able to accommodate the social distancing. And I agree with Jay. I think our students have been very excited to be able to come back and be with their peers, have some, some structure in their lives. And we do have, Jean, students who are very concerned about, about being ill, about, this is, this is pretty traumatic. And depending upon what your life has been like at home, you may have a different sense. So there's, I think, trepidation on some part of students about being in an environment. Jay, I'm going to pause and let you take that for a second.
Sure. Can you hear me okay? Okay. So, so we do have some situations where students have elected to come to our, like at CTE, for example, come to our campus and they have full remote in their whole school classes. That's happening. So you're, you're right, Jean. I mean, they, they really crave the socialization. I will give you some of the details next week about those who have elected remotely in our various programs. I, again, I do have some range, ranges, but I'd rather give you factual numbers up there. But I, I will say the majority have, certainly, to be in person. And we, and we have reconfigured the facility. So we are using just about every single space in our building for classrooms, all of our conference rooms, the cafeteria, any space that you can imagine is being utilized right now.
That's really why I asked the question, because the students are asking through their parents to return. That causes some buring about to find places where they will fit in within the guidelines.
Well, in, in our programs, if I can interject, we, we welcome any student every day, I think, across the board, with the exception of the rotating schedule at, at Rondack Academy. But, but in all the other programs, you know, they, we, we were accommodating if, if there was a request for compelling reason for, for remote learning or even, even hybrid. But, but we preferred and we planned to accommodate them. So in this facility here, we're running CTE in much the same manner as far as attendance patterns go as, as previous years. It looks a little different because we're spread out and paying very, very close attention to, to spacing requirements. And, and it's even evolved. You know, last week I, I went and, and sat with Jay and Lori and we, we put our heads together and, and identified another large instructional space that we could utilize to ensure that we continue to meet all the social distancing requirements. And what, what it failed was some, some folks, some of, who work in, in one of the different divisions are, are doing a little more virtual discussions than being in, in the same room together because we, we needed their space.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? Lori, I have only one. And it's that we, we know where school will return and society will return to normal. But I think what you're previewing is maybe that normal's going to become new normal. And maybe the Teaching in Remote or the TRLE process allows us to capture the benefits of, you know, what we saw is the kind of the challenge of, of teaching at the time of COVID was the notion of remote learning. But I think that as we look at it, there are certain advantages that we've, that we've learned, can be leveraged, you know, using that remote setting. And hopefully, when we do return to the, the new normal, we don't simply reset and go back to what we were doing in the past. I think there's just so much that, I'm thinking of contact with parents and maybe having opportunities for students to extend learning beyond the school day and whatever. Hopefully, that becomes the, the direction that maybe your TRLE process takes us. Because I think we, we, we should not go back to the way things were, but, you know, grab whatever we've learned from this and to strengthen our program using both remote and onsite learning.
Harry, I agree 100% with what you just said. We had an administrator in our region say something. It was during the pandemic and we were meeting weekly almost with our administrators in the region, our curriculum directors. And we're trying to help support them in any way we can, having conversations. And no one would argue that this has not been an exceptionally difficult nine months, right? Eight months, whatever, it seems like years. It's been extraordinarily challenging, both in terms of people's abilities, learning fears. I, it, there's a lot of bad things, but he said this. We, we are learning a lot. We're a lot, learning a lot about how technology can support. I mean, when I think of us having our meeting like this now, it, it's just so, it makes just a lot of sense in just a simple way. When I know Jay used to have meetings and Kathy, all of us, meetings in Albany and Syracuse and different places, and we would be traveling. And now most of, well, all of my statewide meetings are virtual. And I've, I've been able to save travel time. We can still meet and interact. We should, we should take what we have learned. And this is what the administrator said. If we don't, if we don't capitalize on the things that we have learned that will help improve education, shame on us. And I agree with that. We, there are things that will be well utilized moving forward for education that we would have never thought about necessarily or maybe not as quickly without a pandemic. Don't get me wrong. I'm, I'm not happy we had a pandemic, but since we're living in one right now, let's take what, what good things we're learning and utilize them to enhance our educational system. I agree with you.
And I think it's what Malcolm Gladwell referred to as the tipping point. This, this is likely a tipping point. Good.
So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Lori.
Okay, now we're down to you, Dave.
Yeah, so a couple of, couple of things just to report. We did have our monthly district superintendent meetings Monday and Tuesday. It was our first opportunity to spend time with interim Commissioner Rosa in her new role. If you recall, Betty Rosa was the chancellor of the Board of Regents, Regents, and she's taken over as the interim commissioner upon Shannon Topples' move out of the, out of the position. The search for permanent commissioner continues. But, but former Chancellor Rosa, present interim, interim commissioner Rosa is, is, is on the job. And we spent some time with her. She's organized the work of the department with three new liaisons, not necessarily new employees, but, but new responsibilities or specifically designated responsibilities to facilitate information between, you know, government entities, state ed, and the field. The first is with, with the district superintendents, our group. She has brought back a, a familiar face. Some of you may be familiar with the name Jim Baldwin. Jim was the president of Excelsior College. And prior to that, he was the district superintendent at Questar Three BOCs. And Jim is, was retired from both of those positions. He is going to be doing some, some part-time work, serving as the liaison between the interim commissioner and the, the district superintendents. Jim also worked at State Ed, had a spin at State Ed. So, so that's a, a good fit, a good conduit of information for us to, to the commissioner. She has designated her senior executive deputy, John DiGatti, who essentially is second in command at State Ed, to be the specific liaison from the State Education Department to the governor's staff. We certainly want to communicate and do so in, in a very clear and productive manner with, with the governor's staff, with, with what we're dealing with, with the pandemic and the corresponding financial constraints that, that districts are facing. And, and John will be responsible for, for making those contacts. And an assistant, one of the assistant commissioners, Kathleen DiCataldo, will be the liaison to the Department of Health. That's welcome news because with 37 BOCs and how many counties are there in New York? 62, thank you. 62 county Departments of Health interpreting the guidelines set forth for reopening and continuing to keep schools open. It's, it's, it's quite a confusing situation. So Kathleen will be, will be taking up that charge. And, and just the field is hoping for some consistent guidance because we do get different interpretations from the, the directives that come down from the Department of Health to the counties when you're dealing with 62 different folks. We've got fine people working in the three Departments of Health that, that, that we work with here in, in HFM BOCs. Sometimes they, they see things through a little bit of a different lens. And, and what I think Kathleen will be attempting to do is to get the state to be maybe a little more overt and leave less to interpretation. So that's the first round of state updates. And the, the interim commissioner also shared what the Board of Regents is working on right now. Right now, not, not unlike any year, budget has become a priority in the fall. That's not anything new with, with the Board of Regents. But there's also an emphasis on connecting with the field and understanding what the priorities are of, of the leaders of school districts who are attempting to successfully reopen. And that's reflected, I think, in, in the interim commissioners' organization of those, of those liaisons, of that structure. And also, the Board of Regents continues to look closely at equity, in particular, the, the digital divide and the way that it is, in, in some cases exacerbating the inequitable conditions that already exist for students that are, are required to either complete all or at least part of their learning on a remote environment. There are broadband issues in, in rural parts of the state. And certainly, there, there are different economic conditions throughout the state, access to, to devices and quality remote instruction, as well as the, the social and emotional supports that you've asked some questions about and, and, and expressed some concerns on how they are, are addressed through a remote environment. So we, we continue to learn. And the Board of Regents certainly wants to hear, hear from the field. But moving into my report, we have been talking for a couple of meetings about organizational priorities and goals. And just to, to backtrack a bit, we, we've talked about this board creating intentional broad organizational goals that direct the work of the administrative team and the instructional staff and other staff in, in the BOCs. And we, I believe, have come to, to an agreement on, on the three directions, the three areas of emphasis. And what I've provided for you is still, still in draft form until the board decides to make, make a move to, to adopt these. But three goals from the board. First, to identify and enhance regional partnerships within our BOCs with our component districts and community stakeholders. The second, to improve or, and enhance our role as a regional leader and advocate. And then the third one was to build and enhance efficiencies and effectiveness of internal operations at the BOCs. And I've heard with you, and I can project for the group, I've shared with you this latest draft. And you'll notice that underneath it, that there is the organizational goal. But then there are some other goals. Just take me one second to pull this up. And it will define our work. It has already started to define our work here in the HFM BOCs. I just need to share it with the other group. Yes, this is it. I got it right. So you can see, and this is what we talked about, was, was setting the direction for us to complete our work. And we've started already with these, these sub-goals. 1.1, 1.2, 2.1, 2.2. What, what we've done is, is our executive team has discussed some opportunities for improvement in these areas that will support the broader organizational goal. So you can see for, for organizational one, we already have designed a measurable goal and some action steps to support that type of broad improvement where we are enhancing our regional partnerships. And you can see, goal number one focuses on our relationships with the local Departments of Health. 1.2, law enforcement, to ensure that, that we continue to have safe school environments and also to, to have a partnership with us as we engage with, with a statewide initiative around one of our CTE programs, Criminal Justice Program. There's, there's a statewide discussion and review of the criminal justice curriculum. And throughout the state, BOCs are, are seeking these types of partnerships with, with local law enforcement to, to help them review and adapt the criminal justice curriculum to changing conditions that, that we've seen over, over the last year or so. Same thing under organizational, sorry, similar under organizational goal two. Our role as a regional leader and advocate. Draw your attention to goal 2.2 and 2.3 to support leadership in the region, both by building the capacity of our superintendents and school board leaders, and also to construct and implement a structured mentoring program for our early career superintendents. We have seven superintendents in our region that are in their first or second year. And that's out of 14 school districts plus Paseco, which tuitions out their students. They, they still have a superintendent. I don't think he needs mentoring though. That would be, be Dr. Rose, who's, who's been around the block a few times. But we, we want to, to be a, be a supportive partner to, to our superintendents that are, that are embarking on a new student career. And also under, under number two, building awareness and capacity among those working in the region to recognize and mitigate the impacts of implicit bias. And, and we've spoken about that during previous meetings. And under the third one, we've started to build action plans to communicate internally to increase our efficiencies and effectiveness, both communicating within programs and among different programs and also with our own internal operational structures. So what, the organizational goals, those broad goals So what the organizational goals, those broad goals that you've said have allowed us to do is really dig in and bring some detail to it in a way that I think will our effectiveness as a partner in the region, an advocate in the region, and certainly our ability to lead and do so as effectively as possible. So this is where we are. I think if there's another broad organizational goal you'd like to discuss, we could add that. But really, those goals underneath and what the board will adopt either tonight or at the October meeting would be those three broad organizational goals. And we will continue to bring you those sub-goals and update you with our action plans throughout the year. So I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments about what the executive team has been doing with goal development. So I would think if you don't want to edit these, would we be able to adopt them at the October board meeting? Great, thank you. Now I've got to go back over to the other computer. I've become very comfortable with uncomfortable pauses. Let's go back to my report. One thing I did love is it's a lot simpler to operate with just projecting a PDF than it is to try to get into the PowerPoint when it's projecting the slideshow and everything. That one, that seems to bog me down quite a bit. So continuing with my report, wanted to talk to you a bit, and it certainly is aligned with the goals that we've been developing. Leadership support. We have instituted, with four of our veteran superintendents are working with seven of our newer superintendents as mentors. We meet monthly as a group. We had the intention of doing so in person and of having a nice lunch and then have a discussion. But we've determined that that really is a wise way for us to operate right now. I don't think we should bring eleven of our fifteen superintendents together in a small setting and then, God forbid, something happens where one of them comes down with COVID virus and we're looking at quarantining the bulk of our of our school leaders in the region. So we decided we would operate by WebEx and that's been successful. Those chiefs also talk weekly as, you know, a mentor, kind of almost a critical friend type of conversation. Because just because they're new doesn't mean they're not accomplished leaders and educators, but helping them through the nuances and the newness of the position. So that seems to be going in a very, seems to be occurring in a very productive manner. The newer superintendents are grateful for the support. And frankly, some of the veterans say, you know, the reflective nature of these conversations as they reflect on some of their experiences has been beneficial. The first month that we met, we talked about, you know, starting off the school year and planning out a long-range calendar for the year and started to focus on the importance of the school board superintendent partnership and dynamic. And we dug in a little deeper and there was some desire to talk about how to define and have the most productive role that you can with your school board president. That's led to a couple of different outcomes. We focused on a session with the group in September where we, each of the veteran superintendents talked about their experiences in building the dynamic that works for them, their superintendents. Harry and I actually shared ours and talked about the protocols that we have in place here. And what grew out of that was kind of skipping down to my third bullet, but we can go in order, I guess, moving out of the career, early career superintendent mentoring, just overall leadership support. We had a session with Rick Timms. Rick is a retired superintendent and district superintendent who went to work for one of the large financial planning, school district financial planning groups upon retirement. He subsequently, about six or seven years ago, went out on his own, formed the statewide school finance consortium. So Rick has been in the superintendent, he's been in the business manager superintendent seat, the district superintendent seat. So he spent ninety minutes with us last week with the fifteen superintendents talking about the uncertainty that's out there with the anxiety over the aid holdbacks and what the financial picture may look like going forward. If you saw on the news, September, the foundation aid was paid in full. There were some other areas, some other aid categories that did have a holdback in September that didn't in August or July. So it's kind of a moving target with that. But what Rick is able to do is really project forward what a school district may expect, given different conditions that present themselves. And he also talked a good amount about the importance of, ironically, that board president superintendent partnership. So what we've decided to do was bring together the board presidents of the region and the superintendents next week for a session with Rick to just talk about where things lie, what could happen moving forward, and, you know, how best to navigate this as a governance team to ensure that both the superintendent and the board president are moving in concert in a productive way. So we made that invitation to our folks that the folks that I've spoken to are grateful that we planned the opportunity. And hopefully, I can report how that went when we meet next. So any questions around the leadership work we're doing? So we also, last year, adopted our new mission statement, which was how we've generated this idea of partner, advocate, leader. But we also identified core beliefs for HFM BOCs. And we've been discussing that BOCs of New York statement, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I think I had written to you that I was going to put something together for your consideration and you'll have it tonight. And I'll let you leave with it to consider. These are our core beliefs here. All students are unique learners, deserve innovative, engaging, diverse learning opportunities, communication and collaboration for positive relationships, advocate and leader in the region, strong educational system, supporting economic growth in the region, and effective and efficient programs that respond to the emerging needs of education. But we all know that discord that's existed in our nation for the last six months. And we've taken, I've taken the BOCs of New York statement on diversity, equity, and inclusion and really tried to carve it down to its core. And I think I did that in a way that actually lends itself to being considered as a core belief. And blue is what I've come up with. So just to let you consider it, but I'm going to also read it out loud as a statement. Should the board decide to adopt this, the Hamilton Fulton Montgomery BOCs believes that actions and policies that intentionally or unintentionally promote cultural biases, exclude any group, or promote institutional racism must be identified and eliminated. Welcome. Any dialogue anyone may want to have tonight? But I leave it with you to consider over the next month if that's a statement that the board believes is reflective of the values and the mission of the HFM BOCs.
So we could send you any actions or wordsmithing that we might have?
Yep.
That we'd be looking to adopt this at the October meeting?
If we get to a point where we've got a statement that the group would like to adopt and make a motion to add it to our core beliefs.
When you got the group together to work on this and you came up with the wording that you had there, were you thinking in your mind of certain things that might be identified now if you were going to follow this?
I've got a history in my career of considering the impact of actions and policies on particular groups. You know, I've worked in schools, poverty schools, also worked in a diverse high school as principal for seven years there. And, you know, I think the key to this phrase is intentionally or unintentionally. And I think the bulk of our consideration is those things that may happen unintentionally in schools that may put a certain group at a deficit. And it wasn't an intended position on the part of anyone. You know, we've talked in multiple, I've talked in multiple things with educators about, you know, we sometimes refer to them as the gatekeeper effects on high-level coursework, where there are many prerequisites or whether it be previous courses taken or achieving a particular grade before having access to a course or even just the master schedule, particularly in a small school. You look at things and you've got a group of honors students and they're the ones in the honors classes. And that's it. And they're really, the schedule is constricted in a way that doesn't allow students who aren't taking every single honors level course to attempt. And it's those types of things we want to look at and try to eliminate, those structures that can get in the way. I don't think there's a lot of argument that anything that's intentionally exclusionary or racist that people are going to argue that, no, we should keep that policy. It's probably more just about reflecting on our structures and practices that we're not doing anything unintentionally that poses a barrier to the education of particular groups of students. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, that was a good example.
Okay, so if we, so we'll get back to you if we, as we think that went over.
Yep.
Because it is, you know, as you, you know, we're kind of, I'm kind of reading that in terms of the current climate.
Yes.
And, you know, wanting to be sure that it's not reactionary, that it will exist beyond the, maybe the time that we're in now. Okay, anyone else have any comments for Dave? If anything more for your report?
That wraps up my report.
Okay, thanks everyone for the hard work that obviously you're doing. Number eight in our agenda are the personnel items. It is our practice to adopt personnel items as a consent agenda. So I would look for a motion to approve items, personnel items A through J as proposed. Does anyone have any questions about any of those items? Okay, then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Personnel items A through, actually, A through J have been approved. Business items? These, it's been our practice to do individually. So item A, claims auditor report, it's recommended that the board approve the claims auditor report for the period of August 4, 2020 through September 2, 2020. Motion, please?
Make the motion.
Alan, second?
Second.
Yes. I, any, do we have any questions or comments about the claims auditor report? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The treasurer's report, it is recommended that the board accept the treasurer's report for the period of July 1, 2020 through July 30, 2020. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
John, second?
Second.
Jim? Do we have any questions for Kathy on this report? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. I can see the donation of personal protective equipment. It's recommended that the board accept the donation of two gallons of hand sanitizer, three hundred surgical masks, six hundred disposable masks, dozen hand hygiene signs, two spray nine bottles, three hundred Band-Aids. It's a pretty specific item we have here for us, Dave. Two infrared thermometers, twenty cloth masks, fifty disposable gowns, and thirty face shields with appreciation to the donor, the Montgomery Public Health Department. May I have a motion, please?
I don't know.
Jane?
Do we have a second?
Gus? Do we have any questions? Comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The next item is the reserve fund report through June 20, 2020. It is recommended that the board accept the reserve fund report for the year ending June 30, 2020 as submitted by the chief financial officer. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
John, a second? Jim? Any questions for this report?
I want to hear from Jay's dog.
I do too. Look at that guy. Okay, there being, there being no questions, all in favor, raise your paw. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Okay, that motion carries. The next item on the agenda is it is recommended that the board authorize the district superintendent to execute the intent to purchase and service agreement with the Companion Corporation for a library media program.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Alan, second? Do we have any questions about this item? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Item F is recommended that the board approve the revised 2021 distance learning and classroom leases as submitted in the aggregate amount of $524,250. May I have a motion, please? Jim? I, may I have a second?
Second.
Carm? Any questions regarding this lease summary? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries. The next item was one I think that was previewed by Jay's report. And it was a recommendation that the board authorize the district superintendent to execute the independent contractor services agreement by and between HFM BOCs and David Levitt. BOCs and David Levitt to provide onsite and electronic consultation in support of the efforts of ABK to provide a positive climate and culture for the students, parents, faculty, staff, and administration of that school from September 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. May I have a motion, please?
Make the motion.
Alan, a second?
Second.
Uh, John? Anyone have any questions, uh, on that, uh, motion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The next item deals with budget transfers. And it's recommended that the board approves the approve the budget transfers from May 1, 2020 through June 30, 2020, as submitted by the Chief Financial Officer. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Uh, John? I do have a second?
Second.
Uh, Jane? I do have any questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, that motion carries. Next, we have budget adjustments. It is recommended that the board approve budgetary adjustments through June 30, 2020, as submitted by the Chief Financial Officer. A motion, please? Uh, Jim? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any questions of Kathy for about the budget adjustments? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Well, so thanks to Kathy for all her hard work.
Absolutely. Don't let it go to your head, Kathy. We're all starting to go over now. The new year already started.
You can do it. Let it go to your head.
You did a great job. Thank you. Hopefully you're getting that idea across the board tonight. The next item has to do with a recommendation that pursuant to the competitive bidding process, it is recommended that the board accept the RFB and revised RFBs as noted by memorandum from the purchasing official in the following areas. And those areas are the person, the purchase of personal protective equipment and supplies, paper products, and groceries. Uh, do we have a motion, please?
Make the motion.
Alan, a second?
Second.
And, uh, do we have any questions on the, uh, RFBs? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Okay, that, uh, that motion was passed. The next one has to do with approving the, uh, independent audit for Sebel. Having been received and discussed by the Audit Committee, it is recommended that the board accept the fiscal 2019, 20 independent audit prepared and submitted by West and Company. Motion, please?
Motion.
Jane? Second. Jim? Anyone have any more questions on the audit? Okay. Then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? That motion carries. The next item was an informational item. Does anybody have questions on that? It was the annual investment report. Other first item in other business is that it is recommended that the board approve the resolution. I'll read that if you like, but, uh, you probably have seen it. Anyone want me to read the resolution?
No.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve that resolution related to, uh, retention and distribution schedule. A motion, please? John, a second?
Second.
Jim? Anyone have any questions? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Uh, that motion carried. The next item deals with the BOCs district-wide, uh, safety plan that has been updated. Aye. It's recommended that the board accept the updated HFM district-wide BOCs safety plan. May I have a motion, please? Carm? I think I saw Carm. And Jim? Anyone have any questions on the safety plan? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. We're now down to the section where board members are are, uh, have time for any points or comments. Does anybody have anything? Jane?
I do. I was looking, uh, when I opened up the agenda, there's still a picture of the board, probably four years old, maybe. And I think it's time for a different picture to be in this spot. And I don't know what we could ever do, but I think it's something that we should plan for when we pass.
Yeah, I like the way I looked four years ago rather than now, though, right?
Well, I do, too.
Photoshop the old photos.
You know what we could do? You know, send their best photo, whatever one you want.
Oh, my bad. My bad. Actually, you look great. I'll go send that one.
You see the one where people send their child with instant photos, supposed to guess who they are? We could do that, too.
Oh, that'd be a good idea. Uh, they're going along with that idea. I would, I I sometimes look at other school districts' websites to get, see what their boards are doing. And I think I might have mentioned this today. Several districts have, uh, the photo of the board member in a little brief bio. Uh, and maybe that's something we want to consider also, if it gives the public a little more information in terms of, you know, why why we we serve on a board and hopefully encourage people to, you know, choose to be on school boards. It's becoming more and more common for school districts to have, uh, to really have a hard time recruiting members, you know, of the public to serve on the school boards. Maybe that's something we could consider.
That's true. I'm over it, Gary, because I know there's, right now, I'm in, uh, and we're trying to get volunteers. You'd think we were asking them to swim all the way to South America, because nobody's really interested in adding to their own heavy schedule, I suppose, but still, it's very difficult.
Perhaps we could have Craig email each of you individually, get some information and at least get the bio going. And I don't know when we can get a group picture. It's, it's better to have a group picture, I agree, but maybe maybe we, for the time being, will
By the way, everybody's picture arranged on the page and the information you're talking about associated with that person. That's another way to do it without having to do a group.
There you go, Craig. We'll talk about that tomorrow.
Sounds good.
Uh, do we have any other comments from board members or, uh, items they want to want to share? Okay, then if we look at our upcoming meetings, we do have a meeting, our regular meeting on October 28, which will be at 5:00 PM in the boardroom and on WebEx. So we'll look forward to seeing everybody then. Anything else before we adjourn? Alan?
Everybody's looking at me.
Yeah.
Make a motion to be be adjourned.
A second?
Thanks, John.
John? All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone. We look forward to seeing you again.
Bye-bye. See you, John.